...order of our regular meeting, school committee meeting for June 9th, 2010. Everyone is present, Trish? All present? First item of business is the approval of items by consensus. Mrs. Benton.
And before I do the items for consensus, I'd just like to announce to the public, I'm thrilled to tell you all that WCTV has now arranged for you to watch our school committee minutes on your computer. We have been livestreamed and the URL is presently, and it is http://www.ustream.tv/channels/wilmington-school-committee. So this evening, it's on that URL, and if you want to see a repeat of it, you can go to Educational Access Programs. We will put the address on our website tomorrow, but a huge thanks to WCTV for doing this.
Wow. Technology is following me no matter what.
You're reading YouTube sensation.
Yes. Is that YouTube?
It can be.
It will be.
If you don't behave. I have three items on the consent agenda this evening. Approval of the minutes of May 26 regular session, acceptance of a grant from the Museum of Science Traveling Program for the North Intermediate School. And if you remember back two months ago, David Sundberg had come to view with request for out-of-state trip to Peru, and he has since done some research and met with students, and they are going to go to Ecuador at a savings of $1,000. The trip is $4,195. This trip will be taking place in June of 2011. He met with a group of high school students recently to get them thinking about it.
All right. I would accept a motion to approve the three items on the consent agenda: approval of minutes, May 26, 2010, regular session, acceptance of the grant for the North Intermediate School, and approval of out-of-state field trip. We have, Dr. Quick.
I motion to approve the minutes of May 26, 2010, regular session, approve acceptance of a grant from the Museum of Science Traveling Program for the North Intermediate, and approval of the out-of-state trip to Ecuador in June 2011.
Do we have a second? Mr. Hayes? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, unanimous, Trish. Thank you. Our next item of business is the superintendent's report.
Three items under this report. Personnel update, a few early appointments. We're trying to find the best and the brightest to fill our teaching positions and have been able to recently hire two chemistry teachers, which is fantastic. Social Studies teacher and English Language Arts. These teachers will come to the second meeting in the fall for you to meet them up. And we have a resignation from Jody McKenzie, McKenzie Special Education Teacher at the high school. I'm happy to come before you this evening to present our end-of-the-year report on goals. This is the fourth year of our strategic plan, and as you know, every fall, we set goals around the strategic plan, which includes, excuse me, learning results, professional development, facilities, technology, and community. What I love about this strategic plan is that we are able to, it is measurable, and we're able to show what progress we've made over the year. Before I highlight pieces of this report, I have to say that this is not my work, it's the work of the entire Wilmington school staff, and it involves everyone, particularly central office staff, Dr. Peter McGinn, Paul Ruggiero, Neil Ellis, Marlene Pata, and I really need to publicly thank them all. I think we worked well as a team, and we couldn't get this accomplished if we didn't work together as a team. This year, we have continued to utilize our curriculum protocol to evaluate curricula. Interesting enough, the state, you know, just came out with the new standards for English Language Arts and Math. And quickly looking at them, I feel that Wilmington is in a really good place because we're aligned with the national standards that we're now joined in with. What's been exciting for me as superintendent is I've been able to continue the five-year cycle because the U.S. School Committee body has supported the funding for different projects. Also, I do need to acknowledge and thank Quincy Vail for having us, you know, look at open source because it's opened a whole new world to teachers and administrators, and I think it's going to be the way of the future. And it is, the teachers that have piloted open-source materials this year have all commented to me what a great learning experience it has been for them, and that they had been skeptical before going in, and, you know, they have a textbook, the teacher edition, and they just love it. So I think that we will be able to be more creative with our funding as we move forward because we'll be able to maybe put more of those funds towards more, you know, laptops for kids than in textbooks that can get, you know, outdated, but I'm pleased with the process. We are also still completing the science curriculum, K-12. Again, I did not want to commit $200,000 to the elementary science program because I didn't want materials to be sitting on shelves, so we are working, have different teachers piloting different ways of presenting the same content, the same content across the town, but different ways of doing it because I want, again, the science to be more hands-on than textbook form at the elementary level. Dr. McGinn has worked very hard in creating data teams this year. We had a data warehouse grant that was very successful, and all administrators have been trained, and we have data teams at each of the schools. What's important about a data team? Well, it's my belief that data informs instruction, informs us about individual students, but also where we're going, where we are, and where we need to go. And we are now getting all schools looking at individual data so that when someone wants to compare us to another community, I can actually tell the school committee and the community exactly where we are based on our data. So we will continue to focus on that next year as well. With regards to Goal 1B, use models of instruction that enable teachers to address individual learning needs, you clearly can see evidence of more staff utilizing differentiated instruction. Each school's data team is identifying standards that have been troublesome for Wilmington students historically, and we're working at double-dosing on those standards. Teachers have taken advantage of workshops, and we received the Thinkfinity grant, $100,000 grant for two years that provided 20 new Thinkfinity trainers in Wilmington. And unfortunately, I had to go to the degradi-, well, no, it wasn't unfortunate, I was at the degraduation, but I missed. They did their presentations today at Greater Lowell, and I talked to Dr. McGinn before coming here, and the head of technology for the DESE was there, and the head of Verizon was there, and were very impressed with the teachers' projects. Now Wilmington is going to have the largest number of trainers of any town in Massachusetts, so we're way ahead of the game, and these teachers will be leaders, not only in Wilmington, but in the state. So I'm going to ask them to come to the fall, come to a meeting in the fall to share with you what they've been achieving. As you know, I hired Lisa Appolito this year as an elementary technology specialist through the grant, ARRA grant, and she has done an outstanding job of designing curriculum, integrating technology into the curriculum, supporting teachers. Jen Judkins at the middle school has been our district technology trainer. She's led 10 technology integration workshops this year, and we've had great feedback from the staff. As far as assessment data, again, the data team members increase their data use with the tools through the data warehouse. There's been ongoing workshops, we've been attending all year. Professional development this year, I'm proud to say 98, last year it was 94, I think, 98% of our presenters were Wilmington staff, so we are taking the best from within in having them teach. Ongoing professional development training, 178 staff participated in technology workshops. Wilmington University continues to be a very successful in-house professional development model. And our November 2nd Professional Development Day coming up in the fall is actually based on the results of a survey that we gave to all the staff of last year's workshop as to what they wanted to do, and the Professional Development Committee has put together a wonderful opportunity for teachers to work in teams on technology-related activity for the day. So we're going to, because at the elementary level next year, Jerry Lapointe has attained the services of Irene Fautis to come speak to the elementary teachers, who was the guru in reading, and it's taken us three years to get her here. We decided not to do a guest speaker on November 2nd, but have that time for teachers to be spending the whole day working on, in teams, on curricula, so we're excited about that. We continue to offer workshops for teachers in all different areas of the content. Facilities, I think you all know what's going on there with the town meeting approved the feasibility study, and we're now in the process of putting together requests for services for an OPM. In fact, Paul Ruggiero and I did a draft today of that, which will go to the town manager in Jeff Hall on Friday to review and then go to the MSBA. I will be calling a meeting of the building committee in June to get everybody together. We sent out invitations and to get, bring everybody together to talk about the work ahead. So that's going to keep us very, very busy. This year, Dr. McGinn and Mr. Appoloni chaired a committee that produced an evacuation plan for all schools and working with the police and fire department. We have done drills at the North and the Wildwood schools. This involves taking children out of the school, putting them on buses, and bringing them to an alternative site. God forbid we ever had to do that, we want to make sure that all students have practiced it. Huge thanks to the fire and police department for their cooperation, collaboration. I think we really work well together as a team, and I'm very appreciative of their Working with the town manager, we have four warrant articles this year regarding improvements, the Woven Street replacement project tiled, installation of new fire alarm system at Wildwood, the windows at Shoshine and the fire alarm at Shoshine as well. As far as the community outreach, I believe that Neil Roberts, who's a middle school teacher and now in charge of our website, has done a terrific job of responding to my needs of getting information out quickly to the community of changing information, and we will continue to work to improve the website. Any suggestions from community members would be much appreciated. This is a great story. When I did the, we had the whole cyberbullying incident at the middle school, and I put actually an article from About.com that someone wrote about cyberbullying with her, you know, the credits, and I got an email from her yesterday saying, "I was just cruising websites and I noticed my article on your website. I live in Wilmington, and I'd love to come help." So, and this is someone who's not a parent, and so she's going to do a parent workshop in the fall for us on cyberbullying.
Oh, my gosh, that's fantastic.
That's exciting. We also, I am going to be setting up a website on the high school building project with all of our documents on it, along with the committee members and information as we go forward, so that, and probably will initiate a blog so that all community members can know what's going on with that. I think the more information we get out to the community, the better off we will be. As you know, we, you know, completed the NEASC process this year at the high school and look forward to hearing that, the report back. And we have the new community service requirement at the high school, which I think has this class of 2010, although they weren't, it's not till class of 2012 that there is the requirement. If the class of 2010 is any example of what is ahead, we are very fortunate with the students' interest in community service, and I apply Mr. Tracy for pushing that. As always, Mr. Ellis has done a tremendous job with technology. When you look at his results indicators of success, all that's going on. Last year, if you recall, he had to write a new five-year technology plan for the state, which was approved, we're in year two. And, you know, we have 25 new interactive whiteboards and projectors installed in the school system, and the public really needs to know that, you know, it costs $1,000 to install a projector, and Mr. Ellis refuses to pay to have the company install the projector. So he and his team on weekends and nights are known to be around here saving us money by installing them himself, and we very much appreciate that because then we can get more You know, pretty impressive, over 10,000 work audits completed to date in the Work Audit Management System. When we go before finance committee, you know, every year, they're always asking about, you know, work audits and inventory, and, you know, Neil has the data to back it up on as far as the technology, and I congratulate his department for all the work that they've done. And lastly, again, on communication, we are continuing to build a database of parent emails, addresses, for parent communication. Our alert, we switched from Connect Ed to Alert Now. It has certainly been a wonderful tool for the community. I have had nothing but positive feedback about the Alert Now message system, and it really has allowed us to get out of school early this year because we didn't, you know, were able to do early dismissals through that system notifying parents before they left for work. And also, you know, I think during the fall, when we had the H1N1 scare in the flu clinics, it was a great way of communicating with the community as well. So that's sort of an overview of all that's gone on this year.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? It's a lot of information, and it's, for anyone who, you would have copies of this at the Roman House for anyone.
Yeah, it'll be on the website tomorrow as well.
Oh, tomorrow already? Oh, wow. Excellent. Very good. Thank you.
My class of 2010, last Sunday, we had a, although we had, we moved indoors, I did not think it took away from the graduation, just like to congratulate the class of 2010. It consisted of 108 males and 124 females, and to quote Mr. Tracy, "The class was driven by a quote by James Dean, quote, 'Live as if you'll die today, dream as if you'll live forever,' unquote." You know, they certainly made a huge impact in their classrooms, on the athletic fields, on stage, in the band, in the theater, and out in the community. Forty-four members were inducted into the National Honor Society. The class were involved in the accreditation team visit this year, and they certainly represented Wilmington well. And I applaud the members of the class of 2010 for their quest to give back to the community. They certainly were a class that really considered others, including the incredibly successful suitcase for children who are homeless that Katia Riley initiated to the hours of service that students give to local heroes to interact, the Rotary. And lastly, last week, before they graduated, we had 40 seniors over across from the high school fixing up, beautifying the W, and also painting the gazebo on the green. So we certainly wish this class a lot of success. Just for some interesting numbers, 91% of the class of 2010 will either be attending a two-year or a four-year institute, and 3% is going on to trade school, 2% onto military, 0.5% working, and 0.5% travel. So 94% of our students are seeking higher educational opportunities, including trade school. And Mr. Vail had asked me a question at the last school committee meeting about, you know, benchmarks and how do we, you know, measure our success. Six years ago, I sat over as assistant superintendent, and I remember the first, the report in which that number was 64%, so 30% increase in six years, and I think that has to do, credit goes to the staff at the Wilmington Public Schools for, and especially the high school, and Mr. Tracy's focus on going from good to great. So I congratulate the class of 2010, and we wish them well. We also hope that they'll come back to Wilmington and make us proud.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Oh, Mr. Mccasie.
Mrs. Benton, thank you for the report in the class 2010. One thing I noticed on the list of college acceptances, they had not to discriminate against, you know, any other school, because I see University of London, wow, that's pretty cool. But what I did notice here was other schools, something like Tufts, or BU, or Boston College, or Harvard, or anything, is it because our kids didn't apply to those schools, or just other circumstances, or?
Well, first, this is as of 5/18. I know that, and only because I know, I talked to her at graduation, we did have someone get accepted at Tufts, but it was after that date. It could be that they're not applying. I mean, I can find out why, it's a great question. I know that the guidance department has really tried hard to broaden the pool of colleges that our students apply to. We have, our students tend to, a lot of them apply to Merrimack, UMass Lowell, surrounding, you know, communities.
Yeah, I mean, because we had such a talented class, and I thought for sure we have, you know, a handful of them going to Harvard, or, you know, some Ivy Leagues or something like that, just, because the class was phenomenal, so when I saw the list, I was just kind of surprised, that's all.
Unfortunately, I think it's the cost of private.
I was going to say, I think it's so expensive, and those schools don't give scholarship money usually, so it's very difficult for parents to be able to afford.
But I can get that answer for the next meeting, great question.
Kids are applying to those schools if they're interested, or, you know, just where the interest lies, that's all, just curious.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? No, thank you, that was a great report. Okay, new business, award of bids.
That time of the year again, that we're asking you to approve the bids for copy paper office supplies and school supplies. The first one is for, excuse me, copy paper, and the recommendation is RIS Paper Company be awarded the paper bid for 2010, 2011. They came in $26.92 a case versus $26.99 case.
I'd entertain a motion that RS Paper Company be awarded the paper bid for 2010, 2011 school year. Mr. Mccasie.
I move that we approve the bid for RS Paper Company for the copy paper for the 2010, 2011 school year.
Do we have a second? Mrs. Carroll? Any questions? Dr. Quick.
Mrs. Benton, my question is this, when it comes to putting in bids, for example, because I see here, it says for your information WB had been supplier from 2007 to 2009, and this past year, is it just that they come in with a certain number, we look at it, there's no, you know, we just say yes or no? I mean, if you're, if we're happy with a supplier in general, or in any bidding situation, if you're happy with somebody that you've been using, is there a way that you can go to them and say, can you beat this, or is it just black and white?
These are sealed, it's sealed bids that come in, and you have to go with the lowest unless there is something totally lacking in the, you know, in the specifications, like it doesn't, didn't cover everything that you asked for. That's law, right.
Okay.
Good question.
Just a couple of questions. Why so many fewer cases anticipated for the forthcoming year than the year just passed?
I'm so glad you asked that, because we are trying very hard to cut back on using paper, and we have made great strides this year. Based on the amount that we use this year, we recommended a reduction for next year.
So, I mean, just so the people in TV land understand, this is a reduction of about a third. All right, so it's not, it's a reduction of 615 cases from, I guess, what was about 1,600 or so this year.
That's right.
Right, down to about 1,000 anticipated for next year, so that's a huge effort on conservation, and I suppose we'll be tracking, we'll hear back as to whether we actually manage to use that lesser amount of paper, or if we got to go back for a supplemental appropriation at some point. Do you also know whether this paper is, what proportion of it is recycled content, or were there requests for that in the procurement documents?
I'll have to ask the business manager. I'll get an answer for that. I don't know the answer to that.
Anyone else?
The rest of the say is about 200,000 sheets of paper, just roughly the quick math. There's about eight reams in a box and 500 sheets per ream, that's roughly about 200,000 sheets of paper. Quick math.
That's interesting, that's good.
That's a lot of paper.
Sure is a lot of paper. Wow. All right, is that, oh, everyone in favor of the motion? Okay, unanimous, Trish. Thank you.
The next bid is for office supplies, and we had seven bids come in. One was not complete, only bid on 14% of the total items, therefore it was excluded. And the recommendation to the school committee award the office supplies contract this year to standard stationary. I also want to mention, Mr. Hayes actually emailed me a couple of good questions that I'd like to share with the community, one around, you know, do we recycle ink cartridges? And yes, we do, but also this year, because it came off the state bid, it's not, we don't have to bring it before school committee, our new copier contract, I had asked Mr. Ruggiero and Mr. Ellis to look into copiers that we could network to our computers, so we're not spending exorbitant amounts of money on ink cartridges, on printers, that just, I mean, they go, you go through them quickly, so all of our new copiers will have our computers networked so that they can go directly to the copier instead of printing something off and then bring it down to the copier to be copied. So we're really trying to find ways to be, to go green and to be cost-effective.
So more like a scan.
Yes. And also, I knew, you'll be happy to know that they all, the copiers have the automatic process to delete. You know, the.
I was going to ask you.
Yeah.
Before we discuss, can we entertain a motion, and then I'll call him, Mr. Mccasie, to recommend that the school committee award the office supplies contract for 2010, 2011 school year to standard stationary? Do we have a motion for that, Mr. Hayes?
I'll move that the school committee award the office supplies contract for the 2010, 2011 school year to standard stationary.
Do we have a second? Okay, Mr. Higgins, thank you. Mr. Mccasie.
I just want to comment on the copiers, because I deal with this at work all the time, we always federal copiers versus printers, because generally, when you buy or lease a copier, that the copies are actually included in the price of the lease, and the toner in a copier is much cheaper than it is in a laser jet cartridge or ink cartridge, it's much, much cheaper. So that's why, in case anybody else there is asking, well, you're still copying, well, because a photocopier does it much more efficiently, and generally incorporated in the cost of the machine, so that's why it's much, much cheaper.
Good, thank you. Any other questions or comments on that one? Mr. Vail.
Mrs. Benton, can you explain, so the, just the, on the following pages where there's the price comparison, apparently only, I guess, one of the bidders submitted a bid for 100% of the items sought, and then the one you're recommending, standard stationary, I guess, well, there's a number of questions here, only bid on 60% of the items?
That's correct.
Okay, so I guess you feel that that's enough to have it be part of still the qualified bid pool?
Yeah, the determining number was qualifying, no. The determining number was, no, 58%.
So if any, if any company?
They had to bid on at least 58% of the list.
Okay. How, how'd you come up with that number?
It was in the bid spec.
Oh, was it? And then, so what are the plans now to fill in the 40%? If this goes to standard stationary, you still have 40% of some items that you're not going to be able to procure from standard stationary?
Then we could go to office supplies staples to buy individual items. If stationary, if the stationary, standard stationary does not offer those items, then we can purchase them in another store.
Does that go through the same, does that go through a bidding process too?
No.
No?
No.
Just individually to fill in?
Yes.
And do we have any other? Mr. Marchese.
Just to follow up with Mr. Vale, Mr. Vale, if you look at the last two pages, Mr. Ruggiero, I'm assuming, put all this together, he actually put prices on everything to do like a comparison all the way across. So if you look at all, at every single item, so there's a price comparison. So where it's standard stationary, I'm assuming didn't bid, Mr. Ruggiero went out and compared what the market rate is. Again, I'm assuming this, I don't know exactly what he did. So that's how he came up, the total price is actually cheaper than the others, granted that they didn't bid on everything. He probably used fair market pricing out there and just filled in the blanks, like you do most cost estimates, to come up with the lower number. So as you see it, it is a complete number. You know, that's what Mr. Ruggiero provided for, so you know standard stationary may have not provided all the information. Mr. Ruggiero actually went out in the marketplace and found that information.
So if I gather this right, Mr. Vale just wants to make sure that everything's going to be purchased, that we, everything that we need will be purchased.
In the cheapest.
In the cheapest price. Is that right, Mr. Vale?
Well, I don't know. I guess I'm still confused, actually. So on the memorandum, it says, "The vendor, standard stationary," let's say we approve this, $6,920.22. Will the school end up purchasing all the school and office supplies it needs for the next year for $6,920.22? Or is the actual number to be spent on office and school supplies going to be somewhat higher than that, because this is only for the 58 or however many items that we're getting from standard stationary?
The school department will be spending $6,920 on the items that are in this, that principals requested, that are on the standard stationary list. For example, ink cartridges aren't on that list. Paul will get the, will do comparison shopping, and will find the cheapest price, and will purchase those. Your school supply line item is roughly $17,000.
All right, so that difference is, that $10,000 is individual purchases for individual things?
Correct, correct. You got it.
I got it. So I.
Okay, is everybody all set? Are you ready? Okay, thank you. Allo's in favor of awarding the school committee award to the office supplies contract. Allo's in favor? Trish unanimous? Thank you. And we have one more.
And that's school supplies. And there were three vendors, WB Mason Cascade and Office Depot, and WB Mason is, we're recommending WB Mason's bid.
I'd entertain a motion that the school committee award the school supplies contract for 2010-2011 school year to WB Mason. Okay, Dr. Quick?
I move that the school committee award the school supplies contract for the 2010-2011 school year to WB Mason.
Do we have a second? Mr. Higgins? Thank you. Any questions or comments on this? We need a lot of supplies in the school system, don't we? Allo's in favor? Unanimous, Trish? Thank you. All right, delegations. No delegations tonight. Board members, questions and comments? I think I start today, it's your side. So, Mrs. Carroll?
Well, I just want to congratulate all the 2010 graduates. Job well done. You've all picked great colleges. I mean, London, everywhere, it was great. Good luck with you all in your next adventure. I was recently at the North intermediate concert on Tuesday, and great job, all the staff, all the kids, the performers, I mean, they just did, they worked so hard, you know? And the DR officer, Julie, she worked very, very hard, was very good. Okay, that's about it.
Thank you, Mrs. Carroll. Okay, Mr. Hayes?
Thank you, Mrs. Kane. So no questions, but some comments. We're in the season of congratulating people, and I wanted to get all mine on the record. So congratulations to all the students who received scholarships and awards at last Friday's scholarship night, it was a wonderful event. Congratulations to the Wilmington High class of 2010, it was an absolute pleasure attending last Sunday's graduation ceremony. Congratulations specifically, and she's going to kill me for saying this, to my sister Caitlin for an amazing high school career. And also congratulations to all her friends, many of whom I first met 13 years ago when I was 11. So it was really surreal seeing them all grown up and graduated. And they all have very bright futures ahead of them. Congratulations to all the staff, faculty, administration, coaches, volunteers, and especially parents, for another extremely successful school year overall. And above all else, congratulations to our students for a successful school year. Best wishes to our older students with their upcoming exams. And I hope our younger students enjoy their final week of field days, and move-up days, and end-of-the-year concerts, and parties and celebrations. I wish all our students a safe and fun summer vacation. I do want to plug the Wilmington Memorial Library's Summer Reading Program. This year's theme is Going Green at Your Library. It begins on Thursday, June 17, and is entirely free. There's no commitment, you do as much or as little as you'd like. It's really just a summer's worth of fun programs, activities, raffles, and reading incentives. And I highly recommend it for any child or teen in town. And you can learn more by visiting the library's website, or calling the library at 694-2098. Congratulations to Chair Peggy Kane and all the school committee members for a great year. Congratulations to Assistant Superintendent McGinn, Dr. McGinn, for his wonderful career. Based on everything I hear, and based on the few conversations he and I had, and based on his reports from the last meeting, I know that the school system will really miss him, and I hope he enjoys his much well-deserved retirement. And finally, congratulations to Superintendent Ben for wrapping up her third year as superintendent. Wilmington is very fortunate to have you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Robert. That was very nice. Wow. Okay. Mario? Oh, I was going to do it at the end. Mr. Higgins? Sorry.
Robert stole my thunder. Thanks, Robert. And I know how you feel, Leslie, so I'm going to say ditto. Enjoy the summer. That's it.
Mr. Marchese.
All right, well, I'll see if I can match Mr. Hayes tonight. I'll say he did a good job. Mr. Higgins, first of all, correct me if I'm wrong, but you recently pointed to the new building school committee?
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, so congratulations on that appointment, so. This is, it's an interesting time of year, as always. This is my second time coming through at this point of the year. I know it's my first full year in the school committee. And it's been, it's been a great year. And being on school committee, I have to say, it's a lot of fun, it's interesting, and we deal with a lot of issues. But when we have a great administration, we have a great superintendent who supports us, and we support her and her administration, it makes this job a lot easier. And it's not, it's not really a job, it's, we all volunteer, and we don't get paid for this. And it's in our heart and it's in our souls to be here, so it really is a great pleasure to be here. So I really do enjoy this. To the class of 2010, congratulations. I know I've been teasing you all year long, warning you and warning you that the day is coming. Well, the day has come and gone. Just remember this, as your class salutarian, correct me if I'm, there you go, said to you, "Don't be in a rush to run out there and enjoy the world. Enjoy what you have, enjoy today. You are our graduates of Wilmington High School, you will be Wildcats forever. Enjoy it." Growing up is, we grow up too fast sometimes. So enjoy the day, enjoy your graduation, enjoy being a high school senior. But never, never, never forget that you are a Wildcat, and that you've come through this system for 12 years, this community loves you, they support you. Never forget that, and never forget to come back home, because we'll always be here for you. And to the class of 2011, the clock starts now. So everybody, enjoy your summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marchese. Dr. Quick?
I just want to wish everybody a happy, healthy summer. And I actually want to congratulate the parents of the class of 2010, you've done, I had the pleasure of attending the award ceremony and the graduation. And all I could say is you've done a fine job, what a wonderful group of kids. So congratulations to you. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Vale?
I will just say ditto to everything that everyone has already said.
And then I would just like to congratulate Mr. Tracy on another excellent graduation. When I told somebody that it would be over at 3 o'clock, he said, "There is not a chance this will be over 3 o'clock." And I said, "It runs so smoothly, believe me, it will be one hour, and it doesn't feel rushed at all. It's put together so respectfully." And everyone, especially when you have to be inside the gym, appreciates that it's not a lengthy time that we have to be there. But everyone's so excited, and it was a wonderful day. And so we thank you, Mr. Tracy and his administration. And I do have to, I always have to come back to being a teacher. I was so impressed that there were 48 teachers at that graduation. They gave up their afternoon, they didn't have to be there, they were so proud to be there, and you could see the looks on their faces, they were so proud of their students. And I don't know if we realize that that's, it doesn't happen in all school systems. So congratulations to the staff, that was very impressive. Thank you. Let me see, other reports tonight, and correspondence?
I do have something this evening. I have a wonderful thank you card from Kevin Flaherty, the gentleman, the student we gave, we acknowledged the last time, for his perfect attendance record. So he wrote a really nice card, it says, "Dear school committee members, thank you for acknowledging me at your recent meeting. I felt honored and proud to receive your special recognition of my 12 years of perfect attendance accomplishment. Sincerely, Kevin Flaherty." Thank you, Kevin.
Very nice, very nice. Our future meeting dates and agenda items, as always, if anything comes up over the summer, please, in terms of an agenda item, please let the superintendent and myself know. Our next meeting will be August 25, 2010, and then the following one will be September 8, 2010. And now we'd like to take a roll call vote. We are going to adjourn to executive session, from which we will return for a quick moment. Mrs. Carroll, would you like to adjourn to executive? Yes. Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Higgins?
Yes.
Need a motion in a second?
You need a motion?
I do need a motion. Mr. Higgins?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn to executive session, from which we shall return.
For the purpose of discussing contract negotiations. Thank you, Mr. Marchese. Okay, now, no wonder, Mrs. Carroll, Mrs. Carroll's going, what is she doing? Mrs. Carroll? Yes. Mr. Hayes?
I'm glad Mrs. Carroll goes first. Yes.
Mr. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Marchese?
Yes.
Dr. Quick?
Yes.
Mr. Vale?
I'll vote yes.
And Mrs. Kane?
Yes. Thank you.